Welcome to I Can See Clearly Now. My name is T R Carr. I'm the host of this series of podcasts in which I interview various candidates for city council and for mayor of the city of Farmington Hills. Now, joining us for the interview is Charlie Startman, candidate for city council, city of Farmington Hills. Charlie, as we begin, I like to always ask, how should I refer to you? Should I refer? I know you have your doctorate in psychology. So, is Dr. Startman or is Charlie?
No, you can just refer to me by Charlie. Even my clients usually go by Charlie. So, call me Charlie.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going to want to make this a series of Q and As where you can answer questions in your own words. What we try and do is sometimes we hear people say this about the candidate. This is you to, in one-on-one, to answer those questions.
Great.
Okay, the first question I want to ask you is that being a member of the city council is a very, very part-time position, but you hold that position for four years. And so, in your own words, tell me, what's your motivation for seeking this type of position?
You know, my motivation for running was recognizing how much of politics is local and how the changes that are implemented by city council are really the things that impact people the most on a day-to-day basis. And so many people don't recognize that because it's not where, you know, it's not where all the news is focused. It's not always, you know, the most exciting things in the world. But when it comes to, you know, making sure that your trash is picked up on time, that, you know, that the senior center is functional, that, you know, you have access to the people who are in charge of your city and making sure that things run smoothly. I wanted to be able to have a seat at the table for being part of those changes. And yes, it is, it is a very part-time job, but it's one that I take, I take very seriously. And I wanted to run. I wanted to be, you know, I want to be a young voice on council. I think right now residents are looking for a new face, a fresh perspective, someone who can work with sitting members of council, but who's bringing their own lived experience and is ready to, is ready to move for change, to push for something different. And that's why I'm running.
Ah, okay. One question people have an interest in, but they typically don't know where to get the information deals with campaign finance. So, I know we can go online, everything, we can go to Oakland County's website, and you'll have your statements there. How much do you anticipate spending on this particular campaign? Not to the dollar, but in rough terms.
Great question. So, to this point, because I'm actually working on all the campaign finance filings right now, it's very, I'm very glad I have a treasurer, someone who is much better with all of that than I am, but I'm pretty good at keeping up to date with everything. But so far, I have raised in this campaign about $15,000. I have spent in terms of expenditures, probably close to, including my own money, eight or nine thousand. Just, I'm learning how expensive it is to run a campaign, even for local office. And, you know, the costs of, the costs of mailers, the cost of any sort of digital ads, being able to procure lawn signs, these things are, you know, these things are expensive. And I think a lot of people don't realize that. And if you've never run a campaign or worked on a campaign, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect you to.
The next question, which is really related to that, deals with funding your campaign. Where does your money come from? Is it coming primarily from local residents? Is it coming from outside of the area? Just, who's funding your campaign?
Yeah, great question. So, my campaign is funded primarily by people in either Farmington Hills or folks who are, folks who are local, like family or, you know, longtime friends from, you know, as far back as high school, who live in, who live in the area. I've also received endorsements from several local unions, the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors. So, they have provided some endorsement funds for, for my campaign. And that has been where the bulk of my, my money has come from. Regular, regular people and unions and other local organizations. So, I have no, you know, I have no link to any sort of corporate, corporate money, nothing. I'm just, I'm just a regular person running a campaign.
Okay, that's good to know. I know that as we look at you and your background, you have served on the, one of the city commissions for an extended period of time. Tell me about that and what you've been able to accomplish while you're serving on that particular commission.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And we, we served briefly on the commission together, which is great. I am currently the vice chair of the Commission on Community Health. I've been on the commission since 2019. Before my current role, entering into my current role as vice chair, I was the secretary for two years and, you know, kept up with minutes and all of that good stuff. But what I'm most proud of with my time on the commission has been the expanded outreach that we've been able to do. Going to city health fairs, going to, you know, always tabling at the city open house, building relationships with the police department, with the fire department, having, having our online presence expand. I'm really pleased with all of that. I'm very happy with the contributions that we have made to, you know, expanding awareness of mental health issues, of physical health issues, and the importance of wellness. And those things really link to one of the key tenets of my campaign, which is something I really want for the city, which is to expand mental health awareness and programming. So, the work that I have done on the commission has linked itself really nicely to something that I'd like to do if elected.
Okay. One question that I ask of all candidates, I know, is have you, what, your legal background? Have you been charged with anything, even gone to jail or anything like that? It's important because sometimes, you know, the public is simply unaware of that. Background's important.
Absolutely, no. I have no, no legal history other than, other than some driving tickets. Nothing, nothing very, nothing very exciting, unfortunately.
All right, that's awesome. The next question is really, I think, is an important question and it deals, as you mentioned early on, dealing with the caustic center. Let me just provide a little background information for the viewers. The city is contracted with a firm from Atlanta, Georgia. And that firm manages a number of park and rec programs across the country. And our special services department consists of both park and recreation as well as senior services. The, they have given two reports to the city. I've read both of those reports. And the city manager seems to favor the HAWK on 12 Mile for senior services. I'm not exactly sure that I'm conveying an accurate position of the city manager, but the residents have been using the caustics seem to prefer the 12 Mile, the 11 Mile location of building a new caustic center there. Now, for the background of people watching, the current caustic center has a pool that leaks. It has a building that has a lot of problems. So, significant investment needs to be made if we're going to maintain senior services. So, I'd ask you, what is your position on the future of senior services in Farmington Hills in terms of keeping it on, at the caustics' current location? The HAWK? One thing that emerged, which doesn't seem to be viable, would be to build it in cooperation with Oakland County OCC, but they're building a hockey arena. And so, that site is, seems to be evaporating as an option. So, it boils down to these two. So, tell me about your position on the caustic center.
Yeah, thank you, T R, for the, for the question. I want to start by saying that I was recently one of, I believe, two candidates that was endorsed by the committee of the Friends of the Caustic Center. So, this issue is extremely important to me. I in no way support trying to merge senior services with the HAWK. And this to me is a matter of accessibility. The HAWK is not designed, especially the pool, is not designed for the unique accessibility and mobility needs of seniors. I also think that when you disrupt, for some of our residents, a decades-long routine of engaging in congregate meals, physical activity, recreation, lectures, all these different forms of camaraderie and community building in one place, you're disrupting what has been established for such a long time. I don't think anyone disagrees that caustic is in major need of repairs, including, including the seniors. And rebuilding is, to me, the most viable option. I do support it being on the same location as it is. It is a central location in the city. I, you know, talking to seniors, several of them were, were open to the idea of having a, you know, a senior center on OCC's campus. But like you said, that space is really no longer viable. The biggest, the biggest thing for me is we have to make sure that a new caustic maintains the features that seniors have come to expect. And that is a heated lap pool with accessible entry ramps, congregate meals. The city provided, I believe, 114,000 meals last year through its congregate meals and Meals on Wheels program. And just the space for recreation, it's very active exercise, exercise classes, pickleball. I was fortunate enough, two Thursdays ago, to go to one of the exercise classes and, you know, that it brings so much joy. But you also, and you also see while you're there, the mobility needs and that space has been created to keep those needs in mind. So, I have very serious concerns about trying to merge with the HAWK. I would not support any proposal that, that would move in that direction. So, that's a no, that's a no-go for me.
Okay. Because I know, I have not seen any cost estimates for the HAWK. I know the HAWK building itself, it's a 55-year-old building. And I believe the reports indicate that some 12 to 15 million dollars of maintenance right now on the existing building. And that would of course increase with the addition of a pool, a gymnasium, and meeting rooms to serve the seniors. So, it would be quite expensive. But I haven't seen any data, I just heard what those costs would be.
And you're, and you're right. There is no set cost that has been established, I guess, or revealed for what a new caustic or rebuilt caustic would look like. There, I've heard anywhere from 18 to 30 million. We do have a very, Farmington Hills is a fiscally healthy city, which is very good. We have a sizable fund balance. My belief is that we could use that money towards a new caustic without having to propose a millage. However, we, because we don't know the estimated cost and we're just kind of, you know, spitballing, that we'd have to, we'd have to see that. But other localities have put forth, you know, senior center as a millage on the ballot and it passed successfully. So, I don't think that, you know, seniors or folks who use the caustic would be opposed to that. But there, we have to get more numbers.
One thing I might ask is that, as you're probably aware, the powers of a city council member are very limited. The power of the mayor is very limited. In actuality, the mayor is just a member of the city council. The mayor does not have the veto power. The mayor cannot issue proclamations without an affirmative vote by a majority of the council. So, as you look at what the formal powers of a member of the city council are, they're really quite limited. And so, I'd ask you, what would allow you to be effective in achieving some of your objectives as you list in your literature, we'll talk about in a little bit more. What would, what would, what do you bring to the table to get your programs, your advocates, advocacy items approved?
Excellent question. I think so much of that starts with coalition building. I'm fortunate to have the, the endorsements of sitting council members. And I have a good relationship with, with Mayor Rich, with really all of the, all of the candidates in the race and sitting members of council. My hope is to be able to talk with them, to see where are our issues of shared interest, where are our common values? And recognizing that the things that I'm putting forth should be things that we want for the city. We should want to do as much as we can to, you know, expand mental health awareness and programming. We should want to ensure that our parks, our public spaces are accessible and safe for people of all ages and abilities. We should want to push for transparency and openness in decision-making. I know I have already talked to Councilwoman Bolaware about work that we'd like to do on, you know, installing sensory playground equipment at our parks. Councilman Bridges and I have discussed shared interest in work with public safety around racial profiling and policing and, you know, looking into hiring a police social worker, an embedded police social worker for our police department. So-
Let's just stop about the police social worker. I don't believe Farmington Hills currently has a social worker assigned. That's, you know, I know when I was mayor of Hazelwood, Missouri, and when I was mayor, we hired a social worker, an MSW. She was assigned to the police department. And her function primarily was to deal with, she was dealing with domestic violence. And that's one call that police officers hate to make because if they respond to the call, they know they'll be back to that same address repeatedly. And they never know what they're going to encounter. But a social worker seemed to be a, a good step to be able to solve a problem in that area. So, what is your vision for a social worker in the Farmington Hills Police Department?
You know, that is, that's an excellent question. I think it's similar to what you described with your experience as, as mayor in Hazelwood. Having someone on staff who is trained in assisting and navigating behavioral and mental health crises, someone who has a background in case management, liaison work, helping people get connected to the resources that they need. Issues pertaining to domestic violence, mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, those are all issues that are right within the social worker's wheelhouse. And the research shows us that departments that have social workers on staff have, it's cost, it's cost-effective. There's increased, increased resources that can be allocated to the police for matters that are more geared towards what they're able to handle. Better outcomes in terms of de-escalation and less risk of police mismanagement of, of behavioral or mental health crises. Because I think that we have a very strong public safety department in the city. And at the same time, I think even the best police officers and with, with training, behavioral and mental health crises are really hard. I mean, I, it's, no, even sometimes the most experienced mental health professionals don't know how to respond. So, I think just having that support is really important. I think it will make the city even, even stronger in building that link to community, community policing. It would be very effective. And that's my, my hope would be to-
I think the public, I'll just interject something. The public may not be aware of critical incident training that police departments undergo. At the same time, officers are dealing with a variety of issues. And when they encounter a mental health issue, they have to change gears, shift, and it's not an easy thing to do. And it imposes stress on the officers as well. So, they need somebody they can refer the client to, you know, so that, who gives them counseling aid. So, I think that sounds like, without endorsing you, I think the idea is really, really a positive idea. And I hope that that does in fact, you know, occur. So, that's a solid thing. Other things you were talking about?
Yeah. So, I guess, when I was only just going to add something briefly about, you know, public safety and just the link to building those relationships. I'm, you know, I've had the pleasure of being able to interact with several of the city's police officers. Chief Piggott, the new chief, he's, he's excellent and very open to the ideas that I've proposed, that, that council has proposed. And I think that it really just takes somebody who has the ability to bring people together to look at where there is a shared interest in terms of what is best for our city. And I really believe that my background in being in mental health, having people in my office every day, having to, having to listen, having to meet people where they're at, being able to empathize and be compassionate, I think that's something that is missing oftentimes from government across all levels. And I really want to be someone that returns us to that, that we're coming at this from a place of compassion and just good, and good governance. And that's really important to me.
That's a solid value. At the same time, let me ask you this. This is a, on council, sometimes you have to make hard choices.
Absolutely.
You'll be at a council meeting and you'll have, you know, a chamber full of people with strong opinions on one or two or three sides of the same issue. And that they look at you as a member of the council and you will be forced to make a hard decision. Do you have that ability? And what, what, I guess what I'm asking is, as a voter, how can you convince me that you have the ability to make the hard choice when a hard choice has to be made? Because they all have to do it. We all have to do it.
Absolutely. My, my thoughts on being able to make the hard decisions is you can't get into public office or have an interest in any form of government without knowing how to make hard decisions. I have to make hard decisions when it comes to my, you know, to my clients, the clinicians that I supervise, every day. I just had to refer a client that I've been seeing to a, to a higher level of care. And he was not happy about it. And it was an awful decision to have to make, but that is what is in his best interest. When I'm making decisions, I have to take into account, based on what I'm given, based on my own values, what's presented to me, what is going to be best for the constituents. And I know I can't make everybody happy. And I know I will disappoint people. And that, that comes with the territory. I have a really good relationship with my, with my boss. And she always says, if I can make at least 60 to 70% of people somewhat happy, then I'm doing okay. So, that's kind of my, my, my mindset. But yes, I've seen council meetings. I'm thinking of the, you know, the deer issue and sheets and it can get contentious. I hope that, you know, I can at least explain my decision-making process as openly as possible. And people are not always going to agree with it. And, and that's okay. But as long as I stick to my values and keep what is best in mind for the city in the forefront at all times, then I'm happy with that.
I noticed you also have placed in your literature an emphasis, you call it transparency. And, you know, if I'm, I say, everybody says they want a transparent government. But at the same time, you list some specific things under efficient resource management, collaborative decision-making. Tell me what you mean by transparency and by efficient resource management.
Yeah. And I, I think, when, when I think of transparency, so much of that to me is rooted in, in openness in decision-making, explaining to constituents why you made the decision that you made. And this is something that I, as I've, you know, gone to more, gone to more meetings, been more and more engaged in, in council and how all of its, all of its workings. I think that a lot of times when incumbents have been in office for a very long time, it can become easy to be complacent. And I mean that in the sense of not always explaining why you voted on a certain matter in a certain way. And I think we have to go back to being open about why we're making those decisions as opposed to just, it's a yes or a no when you have the opportunity to speak to something. And when I say efficient resource management, I'm thinking basic fiscal responsibility and money management. And again, Farmington Hills is in a very solid place in terms of its financial health and well-being. I want to make sure that we're always trying to prioritize spending and investment in the residents that will benefit most from it. I was recently asked a question about that, like, how will you prioritize spending and investment? And I'm thinking about, how do we prioritize the people who have given so much to the city? I think of our seniors. And how do we ensure that we are investing in the next generation of leaders and residents of Farmington Hills, our, our young folks, our young families? So, I try to keep those things in mind when I think of efficiency and managing resources and funds.
In your, in your response, you talked about the financial health of the city. And when people look at Farmington Hills, they know that we, we have some hotels and restaurants. A common complaint is that we need more sit-down restaurants. I'm not sure the, what the city can do about that. But the question, my, my background is in the field of economic development.
Yes.
And I look at the larger corporations that we have here. We have Bosch, you know, we have Nissan, we have Humanetics. They make all the crash dummies. People think the crash, those crash dummies that they use for testing vehicles then cost between a quarter to upwards of little over a million dollars a copy. So, what do you think should be the role of the city council to help secure, you know, larger corporations as well as maintaining the small to mid-size?
Yeah. And that's, that's a tough balance because you want to be a draw for everybody. You want to be a city that draws, you know, small business owners, minority-owned businesses, young entrepreneurs. You also want to make sure that Farmington Hills is a place where larger businesses can see, see themselves establishing a, establishing a foothold, providing jobs, giving back to the community and kind of strengthening our city's economy. And you make a really good point. There is a lot in terms of that process that council cannot control or doesn't have the, you know, a direct power to do. I think a lot about issues pertaining to funding and again, the monetary piece. And I think about like, how do we incentivize businesses? How do we look at, you know, I don't know, for the large corporations, you know, if grant funding or anything like that is, is on the table. But how do we make it clear that our city, with everything that it has to offer, is a place that you would want to set, set down some roots? And we have, you know, we're centrally located, we're a diverse city and inclusive city. We have folks who, you know, come from so many backgrounds and lived experiences that we are really, to me, an attractive place to, you know, for corporations, small businesses, medium businesses to set up, to set up shop. And I think that, I don't know if I have a perfect answer as to what exactly council, you know, council can do. But I think considering all of its options, those are some of the, some of the thoughts that I have on that, on that issue.
I know my background, again, as I say, is economic development. Retaining a business is worth two or three new startups sometimes. And I believe, this is my position, is that sometimes elected officials forget the importance of retaining businesses out of here, from small business even up to the large ones. And we, we're competing as a city against other regions in Michigan. We're competing against other states. We're competing against other countries. So, would you work to, would you think the council encouraging staff to compete with other entities to retain current industries that are in Farmington Hills?
Absolutely. If we, if we want to be viable as, you know, an economic stronghold for the county, for the state, for the nation, we have to, we have to look and see where are our strengths, where are our growth edges, where can we be, where can we be competitive as a city that is hospitable to businesses across the, you know, the spectrum of size, but also just the different businesses that are interested in coming to Farmington Hills. You mentioned earlier, T R, the, you know, the lack of hotels and restaurants. And I, I agree with, with that. And it's certainly something that I've heard at Doors and discussed very frequently. We want to become more of a destination. That also will result in having to make some, having to make some changes and really kind of competing with some of the other localities in the area to see how can we grow and be more attractive and- more attractive in, in that area. And so I've been saying recently a lot, like, it's going to take, even if you can't do much, it's going to take some political will from, from council to have to make some, some tough decisions. But really look at what is it that we have to do to, to be a competitive city?
As we look at this election season and as look at your experience here in Farmington Hills looking forward, what do you see to be the, oh, the, the two or three major challenges that face the city of Farmington Hills in the future?
It's a great question. I think first is the matter of the caustic center. I really do. I think that that is one, that is probably the most talked about issue. I have heard speaking to constituents at Doors, at forums, and in interviews. And, you know, our city is, I always say a mature, a mature city. We have a lot of older residents and the city's population is, is getting older. We have people who have lived in this city for decades and that they have given so much to the city. And I sort of see caustic and its rebuilding as a way to give back to people who have put so much into the city, who have worked here, raised children and families here, have, you know, have lived here. Some, I've met one woman who has lived here for like 65 years, you know, and it's such, they've had roots in the city. So I think caustic is one. I think the second biggest challenge is affordability. People are concerned about potential increases in property taxes. I understand that. I don't want to do anything that would purposely make someone's, make someone's taxes go up. It's a hard, it's, again, it's a hard balance. People in the city want high-quality services without having to raise their taxes. So again, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard thing. I'm a big supporter of affordable housing, exploring responsible and sustainable development. The city is, you know, is very, is very built out. But we have to look and see what we can do with available empty space in certain parts of the city. So I would say that's two. The last, the last one that I think is really, is really pressing is just the various stances and concerns people have about development and proposed development. I think about what happened with sheets and how contentious that was. And people want to see the city grow and evolve without it losing its character. You learn more and more doing this, that being, being on local government, I think especially, is rooted in trying to strike, trying to strike a balance, trying to find nuance, knowing again that you're not going to satisfy everybody, but trying to see these issues from the various perspectives of constituents. But I do think that, you know, any sort of proposed development, residents need to have input. City council needs to work with developers, neighborhood associations, anybody that has any sort of vested interest in a new development and really look at it closely and see, is this the, is this the best possible space for it? Is this going to, is this going to disrupt a neighborhood? Is this going to encroach upon, you know, a green space or an environmental space? So there's a lot to think about. But I would say that those are the three things that come to mind.
I think your last comment is especially appropriate, all of them are. But as I think of, you mentioned the sheets development, I followed that fairly closely. And it was somewhat surprising that I did not see, and this I'm going to editorialize if you don't mind, we did not see a, an active role by city management taking a position on sheets. When I was mayor and a new development came into our city, one of the, as, as it came to city hall to talk about the proposal, we were heavily involved. I was a mayor, I was council, it's a council manager forum, just like we have here. But I was heavily involved. The city manager was heavily involved, looking at this, trying to decide. We had a couple of issues, you know, what are the legal technical issues? Check those boxes. And then what are, what does it really mean for the future of our city? And one of the things that we tried to do was to raise all those issues so that council meetings were not as, not as contentious. We, you know, I kind of believe the old Dragnet TV show from decades ago, just the facts, ma'am, just the facts. And we don't get that out so people can understand that every development has positive and negative consequences. And if we wait till the very end, it's, you know, then we have nothing but conflict. So that's an editorial on my part. One thing I would say is, to conclude our interview, I'm a voter, just an average voter. Why should I vote for you? Give me, this is your chance to our audience, say, why should we vote for you?
I believe that in this race, I am the candidate that has the most unique experience that has a place right now in local government. I think that my background is uniquely suited to the moment that we are living in. We would benefit so much from somebody who has the ability to work closely with people that they agree with and disagree with, someone that recognizes that local government can be a place of compassion, of competence, of good governance. I believe that we need a new face on council. And I think that I come into this not solely running on the fact that I am a new face, but that I have experience. I have ties to the city. I've been on, you know, on leadership positions in the commission. I have good working relationships with council members. I have been able to, you know, even though this is a nonpartisan race, I have been able to forge connections with people that I've met over the last several months from a whole range of beliefs, some of which are similar to my own, many of which are different. And that's been a really beautiful thing. And we need people on council that can, that can find the common ground between all of the people that live in our city. Somebody who wants to make sure that every resident is seen and heard and valued regardless of age, identity, circumstance, that you have a place in Farmington Hills. And I really believe that right now I am the candidate that is able to do that. And so that is why I'd say, you know, I would, I hope to, to earn your vote. That would be my reason for someone voting for me.
I know that people, if they have questions, they can reference your website and you can answer questions there. So again, thank you very much. We do appreciate your being here.
Thanks so much.
Okay. And wish you the best in your campaign.
Thank you, TR. Appreciate it.
This has been, I Can See Clearly Now. My name is T.R. Carr. I'm the host. We have been able to spend some time this afternoon talking with Charlie Startman about his campaign for council member at the city of Farmington Hills. Make sure that you subscribe or follow us so you can see all the following episodes as we look at candidates for local office here in Farmington Hills. Again, have a good day. This has been I Can See Clearly Now.